Of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Broke all plea?
Note for the record that all council members are present.
Next is the adoption of the agenda, and I'm sure we will all want to note adjourning in memory of Helen Sullivan.
Absolutely. So with that, um...
And one other small thing, under C, under new business, it's the council members, right? Okay. With those additions, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So we have adopted the agenda, and it has two parts. First is the official and celebratory part, in which we install the new council members, and then we reorganize, that is the annual rotation of leadership of the council. And little speeches here and there as a part of the process, after which we will have a nice little reception and party. And then after we've done that, we will come back for a short meeting, and if there's anybody who has anything official they'd like to say substantively to the council, that's when we will do our oral communications and other normal parts of the regular meeting. So, we now move to the certification of the results of the recent November 5th election. City Clerk?
Honorable Mayor and City Council, on November 5th, an election was held to fill three council seats, as well as pose a question to the voters about Measure T, a measure to increase the business license tax charged to liquid storage facilities. The first resolution before you is 2013-39, declaring the results of the filling of those three council seats. There were 1,154 votes cast, and the three winners of that race were W. Clark Conway, Cliff Lenz, and Lori Liu. So, I can give you the results of the Measure T, and then you can...
Why don't you give the numbers, too?
The numbers. All right. So Lori Liu received a total of 879 votes. Cliff Lenz received 684 votes. Gavin Kelvey-Escalar received 298 votes, and W. Clark Conway, 790 votes.
Okay. And so that county certification arrived, I think, last evening?
That's right.
So that's why we are meeting on Tuesday rather than Monday?
Last evening, about 6:30 or so, so it wasn't time to call the meeting.
And so the first thing we need to do is a resolution which certifies the election of, the reelection really, of Clark Conway and Cliff Lenz, and a new election of Lori Liu. And since both Clark and Cliff are a part of the new council with this resolution, I thought maybe Terry would be better, so that they wouldn't have to make a motion approving their own reelection, that we would do that, and then let them vote along if they want.
I'll go along with that. I moved for adoption of Resolution 201, 2013-39, and...
Okay, so that will certify the election once we pass it. Is there any discussion?
How much to discuss?
Yeah. All in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We now have a full council, and I believe it would be, is it appropriate for Lori to join us up here on the dais now?
Either that or after she's sworn in.
After she's sworn in. Do you want to do the swearing in at this point?
We could.
We could do that, yeah.
Yeah, we could do that.
Why don't we do that? Okay, so the next official thing to do is to swear in the three new council, no, three, two reelected new council member, and both Clark and Cliff will be sworn in by the city clerk, after which Lori will be sworn in as, in a separate action. Is that correct, Lori? Okay. So one of Clark and Cliff, go for it, and Terry will do the honors.
Anyway, if you would raise your right hand, repeat after me. I am the State Department.
I am Clark Conway.
Do affirm.
Do affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any mental reservations.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I know well and faithfully.
And I know well and faithfully.
Discharge to goods.
Upon return.
Now the next phase of the swearing in to make all that's official, is the swearing in and taking of the oath by Lori Liu, and that's going to be administered by a family friend, who just happens to be a professor of law at UC Hastings by the name of Marsha Cohen. So, would the professor and our new council member please come forward and proceed with the taking of the oath?
And actually cousins, and...
Cousins!
Cousins, and I wish Grandpa, your Grandpa Carl, the first lawyer, in the beginning of a long line of Delman family lawyers, could be here because he'd be very proud. I, state your name.
I, Lori Liu.
Do solemnly affirm.
Do solemnly affirm.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Now Lori, that you are officially sworn in, appropriate family congratulations, and please join us. Now, probably just as well, if people want to make statements before we go on to, it's okay, City Attorney, if we have a little commentary now before we go on to Measure T?
That's fine.
Okay. So, would any of the newly elected council members like to make any remarks at this time? Let's see, now what order should we go in? Maybe the order of the number of votes, so that would put Lori and Clark and Cliff. Lines up that way.
Well, thank you all for coming out. It's really an honor to be here, and I just want to say thank you so much to the voters of Brisbane, who supported me during my campaign for city council, and thank you to those who encouraged me to run for office. Growing up in New Jersey and attending college in Massachusetts and law school in Chicago, I've always taken the time to get involved in the community that I've lived in, regardless of how busy I've been in my studies at the time. And I've always really enjoyed the dialogue that takes place when people come together to rally around a common cause, and I found it very empowering and gratifying to be able to make a difference in my local community. So my family and I have been very fortunate to come here to Brisbane 10 years ago and make a home here, and at the time we did, we were immediately struck by the sense of community here. And as we came together last weekend to celebrate the Festival of Lights, I was reminded of the common bond that brings us all together collectively to illuminate the city of stars. And I'm very proud to be a part of that tradition. So as I campaigned door to door and met with voters, and I did go with the help of supporters to the House of nearly every registered voter in Brisbane, and I, as I went door to door, I was really impressed by how much people do care about this community, and how much they want to make it an even better place, and at the same time preserve its small-town character. And I took careful notes of the conversations I had with many of you, and I really enjoyed hearing about your ideas, and I look forward to implementing many of those good ideas to improve, to continue to improve the city of Brisbane. And I'm very pleased that my hard work did pay off, and we've had the highest turnout, I believe, to date in Brisbane, with nearly 50% of all registered voters coming to the polls. So I want to thank those of you who came out to vote for the first time, and I hope that you continue to stay engaged and make a difference in the Brisbane community. I want to thank all the people who provided financial support to my campaign, and who put up windows, put up signs in your windows and on your lawns, who wore my buttons that day in the park, and other events, and who encouraged your friends and neighbors to vote for me. There were several people who came up to me and said, "I voted for you," and, you know, I didn't, I had never even met them before. So, I was really, really pleased and happy that other people had recommended me so highly. And I want to give a special thanks to my campaign team, my campaign manager, Michelle Salmon, who knows how to run a campaign in Brisbane better than anybody else. Thank you to all the current city council members for providing me with sound advice and encouraging me to run. Thank you to those who helped me run the door-to-door campaign and went on my behalf door-to-door, Michelle Salmon, Terry O'Connell, Kanji Nishijima, Carolyn Parker, Ken McIntyre, and friends of San Bruno Mountain Watch. I really do appreciate that hard work. Thank you to my campaign treasurer, Van Chan, my neighbor who's here tonight. Thank you to my friends at Emerge California, which is a group that's dedicated to empowering Democratic women to run for office, and they provided me with a lot of sound advice and encouragement. Thank you to the San Mateo Labor Council and the Sierra Club for endorsing me. Thank you to Congresswoman Jackie Speer and former California State Assemblywoman Fiona Ma, who also endorsed me. And most of all, thank you to my husband Ray, and my children Samantha, who's here tonight, and Noah, who's at home, sleeping, hopefully. Thank you to, for my family especially, for, you know, providing me with the inspiration to continue my campaign and to support me no matter what. And as I take office tonight, I really look forward to representing the families of Brisbane, to bringing a voice to the residents at the ridge, and to using my legal background to study and advocate on issues that are facing our community. And I look forward to protecting our environment, to promoting local business, and to looking for ways to continue to bring new revenue to the city. So I look forward to serving with the current city council members and serving the city of Brisbane. Thank you.
So would other council members like to, maybe we start with Terry and go the other, just welcome Lori?
I'm so glad that Lori is part of our council, and that we're back to full staff again. I think that will help with the workload, and I'm so looking forward to having your ideas and your participation, and I'm welcome back to both, Cliff and Clark. It's been good working with you in the past, and I look forward to working with you again. Thank you and welcome, Lori.
Want to say anything? Lori, or do you want to wait?
I'll wait.
Well, actually, I think Lori should introduce her family.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I neglected to mention my family who's here tonight, my mom and my dad, who live in New Jersey, and they happened to be out here for Thanksgiving and extended their stay just so they could be here tonight, so I really appreciate that. And also my cousin Marsha, who swore me in, and her husband Bob as well, and thank you all for coming.
Yeah, well, if you want to wait till you get to your turn, or you want to say anything for reference to Lori?
Well, I'm, it, I'm going to say it as part of my thing.
Okay, all right. Well, then, I just want to say a couple of things, and maybe a few others might if they want, if they wish. I just want to welcome Lori to the council, too, and of course, I'm very pleased that you are now part of this crew. I welcome your legal expertise, I welcome your commitment to the community, and I really welcome your commitment to public service. I know that that's been on your mind since you and Ray arrived in town, even before the kids were born.
Mm-hmm.
And you live right down the street from us, and it was clear that, you know, you really cared about Brisbane, and you wanted to do what you could to make it a better place, and now that's happened, and I'm extremely pleased by that. I also like the improvement in our gender balance. I think that's great. I have to mention this, even though it embarrassed my wife, but, you know, she was the first woman elected to Brisbane City Council way back in 1973, and so we've had a good tradition of diversity on the council since then, and this continues that, and I'm happy that that's the result. So welcome, Lori.
Thank you.
And now, we want to give a chance for Clark and Cliff to make some comments about their reelection status and what have you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to congratulate both Lori and Cliff on their election, Lori on your election, and Cliff on your reelection, and welcome aboard. You know, it's a real pleasure to have you with, serve with us. I look forward to that, and look forward to giving you a few of my subcommittees and a few other... Cliff, and it's been a pleasure, and I'm glad that you're back, you know, I'm glad you're back for another four years. This is actually my fifth full term I've been elected. I originally ran 20 years ago, and then I actually retired for four years voluntarily. So, hopefully I make it through the full four years. There's a lot of work ahead of us, so... But I'd also like to thank Gavin Escalar for making an election, because if he hadn't ran in the last minute, we wouldn't have had an election, which, that would have been a travesty, you know, for, I think it's appropriate for people to get out and vote. So with that, I'd like to, first of all, thank my campaign team, who really did all the work. The only thing I did was approve. And my campaign manager, John Burr, John, you want to stand up there? And my treasurer, Mary Gooda-Cants. Just a little side note, John and Michelle and I all went from kindergarten to high school together, so two of the campaign managers, you know, I've known for a very long time here, which is pretty interesting. So three-fifths of our kindergarten class that still live in Brisbane are in this, in this room tonight. And that says a lot about Brisbane as a town, as a small town. So, I'd like to thank all the people that voted for me, and I'd like to thank all the people that voted for Measure T. And Lori, I have to say, you have got, you actually tied getting the highest number of votes in Brisbane ever. And the person you tied was Steve Waldo, when he ran unopposed.
That's right.
That's amazing, because the night before the election, Lori and I were talking, and I said, "Well, I don't think any of us will get as many votes as yes on T." But she missed it by two. It's amazing. So anyway, now I'd like to thank a list of my supporters, of course, Ray and Anya, Randy and Jolene Romreal, Peter and Ellen McCourt, and, gotta, I should have wrote it down. All the folks that, Clara and Paul Johnson, and all the folks that supported me out there. Most of all, I'd like to say thank you to my family for allowing me to run. Again, my wife Liz, standing up there. My two granddaughters, Laffy and Kalani, that's more affectionately known as Boss One and Boss Two. Boss One didn't really want me to win, she voted against me. Just kidding. And I'd like to introduce our nephew and niece, Atenna Tofa, and his wife, Marlene, and their three children. You guys can stand up if you want, go ahead. You too, Lucas, and, and, Marlene's in the back there with Dakota, who I call Little Boss. She's three years old, so... Okay, and I think that that about does it for me, so keep it short and sweet, and thanks everybody, and I look forward to the next four years in serving, and hope that we can take Brisbane to that next level, whatever that level's going to be, so.
Thank you. Congratulations, Clark. Another great campaign, another reelection for you. You know, I really think that you're the rock of this council, and you've been around for so many years, you provide a lot of stability and wisdom, but even though you've been around a long time, you still provide a lot of energy and a lot of creativity, and I think, you know, your last statement, you know, said a lot about, you know, what you want to do as a council member. And, you know, if anybody on the council could, you know, look back on their career like we know that we will for you, and all the things that you've accomplished, that would be pretty impressive, you know, run on a political career. So I'm glad that you'll be our, our new mayor coming up. Lori, you ran an awesome, awesome campaign. Yeah, you knocked it out of the park. You know, one of the things that really impressed me about your campaign was that you were able to reach every sector of our community, and, you know, when you can do that, that's, that's how you light it up with the amount of votes that you received. And, you know, that's going to be a really valuable attribute to our, our council, and I really look forward to, to serving with you these next four years. Of course, you know, I also have to thank, you know, all the, all the folks that voted for me. I really appreciate having the opportunity to, to come back for a second term. It's, it's really an honor to be on the council. It's a lot of hard work, but it's, it's work that's so rewarding, and I'm, I'm just really glad to, to be back and to serve. You know, I also want to thank my family, my wife Karen, and my oldest daughter Caitlin. They're not here right now, hopefully they'll arrive later. My oldest daughter has, has a special gymnastics thing that she had to attend to, and of course, you know, I can't pick her up from gym practice in Emeryville, so that's where Karen is. But I'm glad to see that my youngest daughter, that our youngest daughter Claire is in the audience, and that there's a big smile over there. You know, you know, my, my children, they're, they're the role models for me, and they inspire me and they give me hope, because, you know, the things that we're doing here, you know, we have to make sure that, that we're doing things right for the next generation. You know, we have the Baylands development before us, and right now we're shaping it, and, but chances are, you know, that when it gets implemented, we're not going to be around. It's going to be them that will be, you know, seeing it, hopefully be built out one of these days, and hopefully we create a good foundation for them. But, though I do feel that the Baylands is, you know, off in the distance, there's a lot of things that are happening right now, things that, that can help, you know, someone like Claire. And I'm really excited about those, those opportunities that are before us, and, you know, it's not just going to be the city council working on it, it's going to be working with all of you. And so, thank you, thank you for your support, and I look forward to serving all of you for the next four years.
Want to say anymore, Terry?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay. So I just wanted to give my personal congratulations.
To Clark.
And to Cliff. And I'm very pleased that we've got really an experienced council, with all kinds of different views, but very harmoniously cooperating together to solve our problems mutually. And so I really look forward, already said about Lori, and of course, Terry and I came together, and now, you know, Clark and Cliff are reaffirmed by the voters, and so it's a very positive note, and I think if there's any council that will really face the problems that Brisbane has, that will do its homework, that will deliberate, that will stay pretty late in the evening if we have to, but not preferably, but will do it if we have to. And, and I really think that the potential for this group as a council is very significant, and I look forward to that very much. So, are there any other comments that people would like to make before we move on to Measure T?
Just my, my family that's usually late, came in late. Just like to acknowledge my brother Dale and his wife Fay, and...
Yeah, we know them.
And my family also, who came in late, my cousin Michael and his wife Joy, and their two-week-old baby.
Okay, so now we are officially embarked, new sitting council. So we have, for our first action, we have to do another certification and of election results, and so I will ask the city clerk to start us off on that.
Honorable ma, excuse me, Honorable Mayor and City Council, as stated earlier, at the November 5th election, there was also a measure on the ballot to increase the business license tax charged to liquid storage facilities. The total votes cast at the election was 1,154. There were 881 votes in favor of the measure and 262 against, so the measure passed by the number required.
All right.
And resolutions before you tonight, once adopted, with the certification of votes, be official.
Okay, so who would like to have the pleasure of moving this resolution?
So moved.
All right, that's Resolution 2013-40.
And I'll second that, and just note that 1,154 is when I was born.
Any discussion on this resolution?
I'm just really glad that we passed it overwhelmingly and sent a clear message that this is something we want to do. Thank you for that.
I'd like to make one comment, looking at the initial response to the, to the measure and the people that were against it, or the entity that was against it, it's nice to know that money won't buy an election in Brisbane, and that it really takes knowing your constituency... knowing your constituency and that the people of Brisbane will do what's right when it comes down to it and that, I think it really shows our small-town mentality that is a good thing. And so I'm very proud of Brisbane in that respect and thank you.
The funny thing is the Noon Campaign spent almost $200,000, if not $200,000 on it. And it produced the same results as our last measure, which was on the recycling facilities. And that was unopposed. So it just seems like there's probably, no matter what election you go into and something like that, there's, there's kind of a-